I'd like to call the town meeting for July 1st, 2019 to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some upcoming meetings. Citizens Advisory Committee meeting will be Tuesday, July 16th, at 7:30 PM. Quarterly Planning Commission meeting will be Monday, July 29th, at 7:30 PM. Town Council meeting for Monday, August 5th, will be at 7:30 PM. And National Night Out will be Tuesday, August 6th, at 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM in the community park. Is there any other meetings or anything scheduled for anybody?
No, sir.
Okay. I need approval of meeting minutes for June 3rd, 2019.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell. So, second.
Second emotion. Joe's got it.
Second by Commissioner Ritz. Any discussion?
No.
Any changes? Alrighty. All in favor of the meeting minutes for June 3rd, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Police report. Deputy Whitehouse.
Good evening, everybody. Deputy Whitehouse with the Sheriff's Office. This is the June 2019 monthly report, police monthly report. Kind of a slow month overall for calls and whatnot, like report calls, but suspicious activity calls were up pretty high, which is good because that means people are calling or posting things. 911 calls, pretty significant as well. There was 10 of those, all from different areas of the town. The traffic stats for the month, you can see we had 206 traffic stops. There was eight collisions. I think three of those needed reported. The arrests are at the bottom there. There was six traffic arrests, one criminal arrest, a warrant was served also. The calls for service and special assignments. Myself and Deputy Hall were present on the 23rd of June for the pilgrimage from the Seton Shrine to the church, the St. Joseph's Church. And Deputy Hall and myself, we were assigned to the Junior Deputy Academy in Middletown on the 25th. That was last week. And we were both present for the Community Heritage Day. We were here all day long for that, up to the conclusion of the fireworks, so... That's pretty much it. It's pretty quick, but it was a pretty slow month for us, which is good. Any questions?
I don't have any. Anybody?
Just a comment. I've been made aware from someone commenting about Facebook, there's been robberies and property taken from garages and backyards lately. I don't know if you've seen anything?
I haven't had, no one's told me anything of that, and I don't think we've taken any reports for any of that either. So, maybe people aren't calling us or making us aware of it.
Well, I don't think it's not happening. They just probably don't think it's significant, but we'll post on there to make sure to call if there's anything stolen.
Yeah. Anytime anything's taken or any kind of crime, we want, we need people to call us that they're reported so we can track that kind of stuff, so we know either to adjust our schedules or to be a certain place and certain times within the town. Please call.
We'll get the word out.
Well, I want to thank you guys for Community Day, for all your help.
Sure.
For all, being here the whole day. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think that things like that are being stolen is like a little, like, solar totem from someone's porch or a something silly. What, I don't think it feels real significant to people, but it's, I think it's...
Yeah. It's still a crime. We still, I mean, someone's still a victim of a crime, so we want to know about that, no matter how small or insignificant.
We want to stop that trend.
Yes. Otherwise, it'll just continue, so... Yep. Definitely call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Town managers' report.
Excuse me. Good evening. This is the town manager's report for May 2019. I'll highlight some of the key areas. Related to streets, staff conducted their monthly street sweeping. Staff also put up banners and flags for Memorial Day and the Fourth of July. Staff installed the Tree City USA signs on the Welcome to Emmitsburg signs on South Seton and East Main Street. And then contractor and staff dug out the storm drain inlet and installed a new swale and put down Riprap Stone to the rear of 29 Provincial Parkway. Related to parks, staff conducted their daily park checks, which include the trash cans, the cameras, the dogway stations, and the restrooms. They conducted their monthly park maintenance checks, which includes all the playground equipment, all the roads, fences, and pavilions. Staff put up new recycling containers in each of the parks, so we encourage everybody, if you're in the parks, to please recycle. Staff has installed a new board fence at the farmer's market. They assisted with getting the pool ready for opening day, and they mowed, trimmed, and we killed all throughout the parks. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is still at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. Well number three and number four are still shut off to allow less gallons per minute through the plant. The lake is still holding well. Water production and consumption. We produced an average of 281,984 gallons per day and consumed approximately 253,592 gallons per day. The difference between, the difference is backwash water about 12.6%. We purchased approximately 448,850 gallons of water from the Mount, Mount St. Mary's this month, the month of May. Related to wastewater, in the month of May, we received 8.25 inches of precipitation that month. The average is only 4.5 inches. We currently have a surplus of 6.8 inches over the last six months. During the month of May, we treated an average of 950,000 gallons per day and only consumed 253,592 gallons per day, which means that 73.3% of the wastewater treated in the month of May was wild water. We had one spill of untreated sewage in the month of May due to a large amount of rain, and that occurred on May 5th. We lost approximately 5,500 gallons at manhole number eight. The incident was reported to MBE and the Frederick County Health Department. We did exceed the plant design capacity seven times in the month of May. During the month of July, trash pickup will remain on Mondays. The next section is just some of the meetings that I attended during May, month of May. Some noteworthy items. The pump station flooded due to the rain event on May 5th, causing the muffin monster to blow a hydraulic line and the seal water pump motor to burn up. Everything has been fixed since that event, and it seems to be running in good condition. The staff upgraded some water meters, unclogged the sewer main along North Seton, repaired several fire hydrants, and repaired a water leak on North Seton Avenue. Ms. Nail provided me a number on, for pool patrons. On Community Day, the attendance was 258 patrons, took advantage of the free pool day. As we're looking at the numbers and the usage of the pool, we got a lot of people using the pool. Several daycares will come up a couple days a week. So, we're seeing great usage out of the pool. So, that's the manager's report.
Is there any questions for the town manager at this time? Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes, sir.
Let's start at the top. Elizabeth?
Couple people concerned that the bathrooms are not being unlocked. Did someone contact you about that?
Bathrooms are not unlocked on the weekends unless they're being reserved for the parks. The bathrooms are unlocked in the parks Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:00.
Okay. So, someone contacted you?
No. That's just, that's our routine.
Okay.
It's the way they have been. Unfortunately, we had to not keep them unlocked because of vandalism.
Vandalism. That's what I said.
But there are porta potties out there.
There's porta potties everywhere.
There's porta potties in Community Park.
Oh, there are?
Back towards the ball fields.
Behind the post office?
Yes. There's one right behind the hose.
But is there one over...
There's one in Community, there's two in Community Park, back by the Baybrew Field and in the other parking lot next to the walking trail.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ritz?
No, thanks.
Glenn, you have anything?
Nope. Good.
I've been at the pool quite a lot this season since it started. They've been running it pretty well. Everything's been going pretty smoothly. They only had a couple little minor incidents up there. But everything, to me, seems like it was running.
Good.
But we do have a good lifeguard staff this year, it seems to be. Concession stand is up and running when I can never open it up. But we're doing good at that, too, so the Lions Club appreciates letting us use the concessions stand. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you. Town planners' report?
Yes. Good evening. This is the town planner's report prepared by Zach for May of 2019. I'll highlight some of the areas. He created and processed an RFP for the implementation of the Cross Connection Control Program. Related to community legacy, he attended a grant training webinar. He also processed three reimbursement requests for the fiscal year 2017 money, and he processed one reimbursement request for FY 2019's community legacy money. He is continuing to process 2019 contracts. He prepared the resolution to continue with the community legacy program that the board approved at the last meeting. Submitted quarterly reports. He submitted the final report for the 2018 Cleanup and Green Up Maryland Grant. I believe those were the recycling containers that were installed in the parks. And then he continued to work on the Community Legacy Facade Restoration Grant Application for FY 2020. We once again requested $75,000 for FY 2020. For MS4, he finalized the Provincial Parkway Storm Drain Project. Under permits and zoning, you'll see that he approved numerous permit applications ranging from demolitions to change of use to cross connection and fences. He continues to field multiple questions on the new cross control permit program. Received, processed, and provided comments on the proposed rudder store, forest conservation, and site plans. Ms. Lanius, who wrote a newsletter article on high grass and weeds, attended the Green Team Meeting and started working on the 140 South Seton Avenue subdivision project. That's all the planner's report.
Any questions for the planner's report at this time? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just one item. The demolition permit, is that for, do we have any knowledge on that one at all?
I do not know what that one was for.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ritz?
I have two. When is the next, I guess, when and where is the next meeting regarding rudders?
It, the...
Plan or...
The planning commission approved the site plan. We are awaiting the improvement plan now, which would be your streets and your sidewalks and your water and sewer systems. We have not received that yet. I think we're anticipating that, I believe, towards the end of August, beginning of September. Once that comes forth, then staff and an engineer will conduct a review of it.
I'm sorry. I said I had two questions. It morphed into three. That made me think of another one. Regarding, I guess state would probably be involved. This is regarding rudders. It's a side question. Traffic and the installation of traffic lights in that area, is that all part of that process?
That would be the state's traffic study that they're going to mandate them to do. I think at this point, they're not requiring a traffic light at that intersection. They have sent back some comments about the installation of sidewalks and curb and gutter. But as far as a traffic light, I haven't seen that request yet. I know there's required traffic studies, though.
Okay.
I don't believe we, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we've received that yet either, have we?
No. They have meetings with the state. That's, they have to unwind that, but they're, what they've done with us, and then they'll be back to us.
Yeah. One more?
I do, but if Commissioner O'Donnell has a question regarding the rudders, I can...
I have a question.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Okay. Thank you. Regarding the site plan approval, my understanding was that the planning committee had asked for an improved design for the structure. Is that separate from the site plan? I had understood that the town manager had shared with them the architectural guidelines, something better than their initial effort. I really wanted to commend the planning committee for doing that, but is that not the case?
I do not believe it was required. I think it was suggested. They approved the site, and Commissioner Blanchard probably, you know, may be able to comment better than I can. My understanding, without reviewing the minutes yet, is the site plan was approved as is, but the planning commission did mention your request, or the commissioner's request regarding the architectural guidelines, and they said they would definitely take it in consideration and make changes where they can. Is that correct?
And that pretty much goes back to Commissioner O'Donnell. Yeah. Exactly.
Okay. Because it would be incumbent upon the board, then, when we receive those site plans, that
Review those.
If we're not satisfied, we would not have to accept it. So, I think that, you know, part of where our hands are tied in the process appropriately, we can't comment at the meetings, but we can in this forum. So, when it comes to us for the final approval, we have that authority.
For what it's worth, they did seem pretty open to suggestions as far as changes are concerned. But that wasn't a writing. It was obviously kind of spoken to as far as it goes in the meeting. But they did seem very open to make changes that take place. So, we'll wait to see what happens with that process.
Commissioner Ritz?
Did Commissioner Buckman have a question?
Okay.
Yeah. If all goes as scheduled, when is the anticipation opening date?
Opening date? I don't have the opening date. They wanted to break ground, I believe, by the end of the year.
Is it one of those places that goes up very quickly? Is it...
That I don't know. I believe they're anticipating breaking ground. They were hoping to break ground by the end of the year. I thought they wanted to be up and running by spring of next year, but don't hold my feet to that.
I won't.
They still have to bring sewer and water.
Right.
No, I understand.
That, all the utilities have to be brought there, and it's coming in from two different directions, and it's going to be a great benefit. A lot of people really talking up having the asset here, bringing traffic here.
I think it's bringing all those utilities, which could mean that we bring future businesses.
That, that's exactly right. And there's interest over there, more interest over there now, so...
That's good. And then I'm having, I drive by, I see their little trailer there where Frank used to be, and Frank, our vegetable man, is very sick, so keep him in your prayers. I'm having trouble visualizing where the rudder is going. Is there aerial sort of view of how that is? I would like to be able to know where that is.
There is an aerial somewhere. I will try to get ahold of Zach tomorrow and see if we can send an aerial out or put it up on...
I would appreciate that, because I'm having trouble seeing that, how the entrance to the highway, where the entrance for Emmitsburg would be, and how it lays out where that bridge is.
What you'll do is you'll come up the ramp. So, if you're coming northbound on 15, you'll get off at the ramp to Emmitsburg, and you'll make a right. You'll go past, if I recall correctly, past the trailer, and there's going to be an access road that runs down there, and it kind of curves back in. And that's where...
Won't have direct highway access. You have to enter. Okay.
Right.
Right beside, to me, I'm sorry. It's going on the old road. The old piece of, the old piece of 140 that's still left in there, probably. That's where they're going up through.
Right. But there, there's a, the state highway bought 10 acres over there from the wave rights to put a parking ride.
A parking ride. Are they going to put it up same time?
I think this is going to be before, but I don't know. They're going back and forth, and they're sharing roads, and it's, that's a development point that we wait for. 200 acres of land over there is in the town, was brought in in 1990. So, it's been there a while, and...
Any other questions?
I'm done, but I think Joe has another.
Commissioner Ritz, you have, does anybody have any more questions about the rudders before we move on to something else? My next. Okay. Joe, you're up.
Okay. Last question. It's regarding the subdivision at 140 South Seton. When I think of subdivision, I was thinking like a development, but it's splitting, it's basically the outbuildings remaining with the town and then the selling of the property, the house itself.
Yeah. The proposed site plan, which the mayor's still reviewing, we anticipating and just dividing them off into two lots.
I see. Okay.
Two pretty much equal lots with easements, so town staff still has access to the garage.
Do you foresee a smooth process?
Yes.
Everything's coming along nicely?
We need a couple of issues that we have to tackle, and the mayor's going to review, and we're going to finish up with that this week and hopefully move on with it.
Okay. That's all I have. Mr. President, thank you.
Any other questions for the town planner's report? Alrighty. Thank you. Commissioner Commons? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir. Thank you. My hats off to staff for the preparations for Community Heritage Day. Also, to the Lions Club, Mr. Sweeney, and to Ms. Jenny Joy for her efforts to coordinate the process. They moved it back. It seemed like it was successful in their departure from past ways of running it. I'll add that we had 50 cyclists in town through the course of the weekend because of Community Day and following up on some trail work. It was kind of nice. Having attended recently, last week, the Maryland Municipal League, a number of sessions, I think I went to 10 sessions in the course of the four days. A couple of quick things, summaries, super quick. There's a small cell tower issue that's coming to town eventually, and it relates to who will have authority to place them. If we do not have something in place in our zoning, then an outside organization like a business could place it where they choose as they have the authority through the Federal Trade Commission at this point in time. And there's some issues related to that if the FTC has the ability to legislate. So, what we have to do is get ahead of this significant issue, hopefully sooner rather than later, because these towers can be up to 50 feet tall. They have a range of about 500 feet, so there could be multiple, depending on the density of the use. And at their base, they have a rather large box. It's about four times bigger than the podium right here. So, these could be planted anywhere they chose, and therefore, I will ask that we, as a board, direct staff to look into appropriate zoning so we can protect the aesthetic of downtown and our community without having something forced upon us. If we don't have that policy, an outside business can tell us what we can do. So, we lose our autonomy there. Moving from there, the census is coming up, the 2020 census. I ask that we have, start now, notifying the public on our, you know, our media outlets, advising folks to expect activity, to expect questions, and the more accurate our census is, the more services and funding we receive for our schools and for our community, among other items. So, it is imperative that we really get the word out to educate our good people here and let them know that they need to speak up and be counted, and it will serve our community as a whole very well. They spoke about data security in another meeting, and the key pieces there are backup and encryption. I know, having talked to staff, we have that. But we saw the hostage-taking of data and the theft of data, and these are things that we need to be prepared for, and it sounds like we are in some ways. As per the request of certain community members, I attended the CERT meeting, the Community Emergency Response Teams. The meeting was informative. They provided go-bags and what to do in case of a crisis. It was informative, and perhaps in the future, we can create a Community Emergency Response Team program here in town, especially with FEMA and experts in town in this room who are willing to cooperate on that. Another item I attended was the LED lighting discussion, and one of the pickups I walked away with was there are LED lights that are adjustable to save money, meaning that if you have a low-traffic area, you can actually dim the lights for certain hours and reduce the amount of electricity that you're consuming. And that might be something worth our effort. The other piece is, there's, it seems like there's constantly evolving technology in LED. So, it seems like if we invest now, and by the time we pay for it, we're obsolete in what we're doing. So, that's a little bit worrisome. The last item that I attended was an event preparedness discussion about how to manage events. And when I came home for Community Heritage Day, I made sure I had maps to the Vigilant Hose Company of where the campsite would have been and what the kids were up to, and they graciously took it, and they didn't laugh at me. So, I thought I did the right thing, but it was, I thought, helpful. I did speak to Senator Ben Carden. I advocated for a north-to-south route for a spur off the Seano Canal, connecting the canal to Gettysburg Park. He is interested, and his office has been in communication with me. I'm kind of excited about that. Sorry. I missed one item. The Silver Tsunami aging in place in the Village Movement. There's great energy behind having we, as we age, remain in place. And the idea of setting up networks and overlapping support systems, and I think actually in our community, we have much of this. But at the same time, there's some really good resources that they put forward, and I'd be happy to share those. But, you know, if someone's more clever than I and just goes online, you can find it all right there. But there's a real strong program that they have there. And outside of that, I feel that the MML, again, was a very useful thing. I have a better understanding of what our expectations, what our expectations are, like sort of a vision for our future, and it helped clarify that. I think we're, I think as a town, we're heading in the right direction, and I think these events, you know, these workshops definitely help us steer with more information, you know, coming from a better informed position, and hopefully more open-minded, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ritz?
I, too, would like to thank everyone who was involved with Community Heritage Day. That's the first time in how many years I can remember it raining.
Second. We had to move it one day, one time to Sunday.
Okay. It's been a while, but hopefully it wasn't too much of a deterrent. So, again, hats off to everyone who helped that be a very good, successful day. I attended the Wayside Exhibit unveiling presentation, as you will, on Community Day. Thanks to everyone who got that ready, staff, all of the other individuals who came and spoke. It was very hot out there, but those signs look, look great up close and personal. You know, we saw them here and deliberated over what was going to be on them, and I think they look great up in person. MML, I, too, attended. I'm not an expert at MML. Some of my fellow commissioners, I'm a novice. This was my first time attending. I don't know how Commissioner O'Donnell was able to get in 10 sessions. Some of mine lasted a little bit longer, but I made it work. So, it was very informative, so I look forward to going to future ones as well. And just a final note on the 19th, a friendly reminder, we have our second Summer in the Concert series. It's Five and a Half Men, classic and classic rock and country, starting at 6 o'clock Friday evening, July 19th, 6 to 9. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Buckman?
I think Five and a Half Men have played at the Mother Seton School Carnival, and they're very good.
Yes. And the lead singer, rhythm guitarist, graduated high school with me, so we go back a ways.
Oh, nice. Nice. I don't have much to say, except congratulations again to Cliff for getting an award at MML for his extended years of service as a commissioner. How many years has it been?
I'm on my 22nd, yeah.
22nd year. Pretty remarkable. Yeah? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Blanchard?
Just reiterate, great Community Day again. Thanks, Mr. President, for your efforts and all that, planning all that, and Lions Club. Food is excellent, as always. Fireworks, great. Got it in just, just before the storm hit. That was, that was pretty neat. I was like, literally, I could see lightning and thunder over the corner as the fireworks went up. Like, extra fireworks? I was like, oh, what's going on?
Yeah. We planned that.
It's pretty well done, so, pretty neat. MML, always great as always. Tended some of the same classes as Commissioner O'Donnell did. The 2020 census, just to reiterate the importance of that. Obviously, the importance of every single person in the town being counted, the amount of funding that comes from the federal government, state government, getting the college involved, everything. The census, which occurs every 10 years, is just incredibly important, basically, when it comes to our town and what it means for us. One of the classes I got to attend also, and I want to mention the deputy here, is community policing. Just getting out and about. I know we guys do quite a bit of, you know, when it comes to the bicycling and walking and everything else, so I was pretty pleased when I attended the classes, like, well, we're doing everything, basically, they said we're supposed to do, so kind of pleased about that. That's good classes. MML is always a great way just to meet people from all the different townships in the state of Maryland, just associate with people and see what's going on in their classes and everything else. And I think that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody and for all the help for everyone in town, because unless the whole town participates in the Community Heritage Day, it wouldn't go off as it does. We had the storms come, and everybody had left, but everybody come back.[1777.37] We had the storms come and everybody had left, but everybody come back, but the town staff, the, all the clubs, the fire department, the ambulance department, all of us here and, I mean, everybody helped and it takes a community to put that on. So I don't know how the Lions Club did it for all them years, but I needed help when I took, but it turned out really, really well and we shrunk everything down into the afternoon, if the rain would've came, it'd been the perfect day.
And I do think that was better.
Yes, we're gonna keep it shrunk down, it released at dead time.
It was going a little bit sound system.
It's echoing a little bit, that's why I don't like talking into it. That's a little bit loud, but I appreciate everybody's help and the police and everyone, without everybody's help we couldn't do it. I also attended the MML conference for the first time and I enjoyed it greatly. I liked the classes, I liked, it was different than what I thought it was going to be. I appreciate the town for putting me in for the award, I got to meet a lot of people, including the governor and past governors and a lot of people from a lot of towns that have the same problems we do. So I was able to sit with the people and talk and we did some activities together and tried to solve problems with the town, cases that would pop up unforeseen, but it was great. I started the core classes, I wanna continue that, so I, if I'm commissioner for a couple more years, I hopefully can
Get your degree.
Get my degree before I leave, I should've had it already, I'm disappointed that I didn't go before now, I should've went before now.
But there's classes you can also take throughout the year, right?
Yeah, but I should, I mean, I didn't expect it to be the way it was. I was thrilled that it was the way it was, so. Other than that, I also attended the Wayside Exhibit Ribbon Cutting on the Square, it turned out really well, we had dignitaries here from Frederick and they walked the streets and the mayor walked the streets, I've seen them all walk the streets and showing them all the work that's been done, but that turned out really well too, even though it was really hot out. So I appreciate, I talked to town staff about the sewage problem for when it rains and he said, Dan had told me that the wild water was knocked down some in June, it was, the pumping station didn't get flooded like it usually does. So that's a good thing that the East Main Street rehab that we had done is working and he told me that the manhole will be going in shortly
Right.
That's down there, so.
We have to get the [inaudible] State Highway before we can start.
Getting the pumping station, I mean, the new bridge and stuff down there and the new pumping station and will help, that's on higher ground, so, somewhere. But other than that, that's all I have to say. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you very much. To the staff, 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 thank you very much and to the deputies. We've had a pool party last week, we've had Community Day, we had a shredder there, a community shredder, which was well-received and be invited back, but Jimmy Click, thank you for your staff, we couldn't have done any of this without what the staff has done. Commissioner Rich, your first summer concert was terrific, the Lions Club, Jenny Joy, Commissioner Sweeney, a spectacular event, Community Day, and congratulations, your twenty years, twenty-two years of service, it doesn't show up yet.
No.
To the EVPA who was always there in the background helping out, pushing around, they've got some new enthusiasm, to Commissioner O'Donnell for bringing those Viking campers and they came into town, they rode in here, they did work on the trail, and how many were there again that they camped out?
On Sunday, a lot of folks came in, so we had twenty-four.
Right, they didn't get to camp out because of the thunderstorms, but they'll be back next year maybe, probably.
Twenty-four riders, sorry, twenty-four came to ride Saturday from a separate group and twenty-seven were here Sunday for the trail work.
Okay, great, great. I had lunch with the security person from the, Ken Vaughn from the Daughters of Charity of the Week, Michael Kay, staff, we met with the town planner and the town manager and I met with him on Tembrine, we're putting out the new bidding, we only got one bid, anything was appropriate to do that and we called the people who didn't bid and found out this happened and that happened, so we flushed, sent it out again. I went to the Association of Climate Change Officers Academy with the state of Maryland. State of Maryland and Colorado are the only two states that are incorporating this, but everybody's getting, the interest is mounting and of course it's so phenomenal that Pennsylvania, Virginia, North Carolina are lining up to start the program, it's a phenomenal course with testing and all kinds of things, so it's been really, really spectacular. Pool party, I wanna thank Commissioner Blanchard for helping out on that and my wife, Libby, and Amy Nail and Mattie Shaw, we had about over a hundred people there that night for that and we had like two-hundred-and-fifty-eight people on Saturday at the pool.
Friday too.
Right, it was just absolutely incredible asset this year. Is this our microphone?
Yours is fine, it's Cliff's.
Oh, it's mine, okay, thank you. We received, had a chance to drive, to ride around in the new town electric vehicle, we are now have a hundred percent electrical vehicle and it's very special. Heritage Day again was terrific, Wayside Exhibits, we had guests there, Councilman Blue and County Executive Jay Gardner, we put the first of three in, we have three scheduled for next year, we're running grants to bring this, expand this path around town and show off our talent and let them down in here and bring it, like four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people who are roaming around this area, not in a radius here, in a very proximate way, I'd say this. I think that's, that would be it. Flag Day, I went down to Representative Emmett Spur with Commissioner Kinnaird and I, I think Commissioner Mayor Kinnaird, we cited the federal agents of the flag, Emmett Spur, BMW six-six-five-eight and Thurmont, they were there and also our legion posts were there, I think they're better to far more, so. Very, I can't say enough about our staff and the deputy service for getting, that was really a strong month of activities going down, there's no let-up in sight. Derek, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Administrative business, there's none? Oh, I'm sorry, public comments, did you have one public comment, Diane?
No, I'm just, put my name in and it's fine.
Okay, so an agenda we have none? Treasury report?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. O'Donnell?
For cash activity as of June twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, we have a cash balance on June first, two thousand nineteen, of five million, five-hundred-seventeen thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. We had deposits of sixty thousand, thirty-five dollars, we had withdrawals of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. The operating balance forward from that time was five million, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Lower the top ten checks, for your consideration for review.
I'd like to point out just two things, the mayor said the electric vehicle was delivered the weekend of the twenty-fourth, we are waiting to put the town seal on it before we put it out in field for operation, so, but if you'd like to take a look at it, it is sitting in the back lot here, it's a nice [inaudible].
You need to paint a logo.
[inaudible] is gonna put a logo on both sides for us.
Nice.
Right now it's in stealth mode.
Stealth mode, yes. That's why it's sitting up there.
We use it for errands, we run errands, but not for [inaudible].
Did we change the other one in yet or have we sold the other one yet? The silver bullet?
No, we are gonna hang on to that one as a backup until it dies and then once it dies, it's done, we're not gonna be fixing it up though.
[inaudible]. Everything about that car.
And then my other comment would be related to the fourteen thousand, nine oh five check from Potomac, to Potomac Edison, it's the third line down. This is the new wastewater treatment plant at sixteen-seven oh seven Creamery Road, this amount represents two months of billing for April through May. This location is normally greatly reduced because it is the, on the solar field number two schedule, monthly average for this location is only about twelve-hundred dollars, so for two months it should've only been two-thousand-four-hundred, instead we paid fourteen thousand, nine oh five because solar field number two was down for a considerable amount of time. We were notified in mid-June that solar field number two is now back in operation, so hopefully we'll start seeing the savings again.
Any other questions for the Treasury report this time? Here we go, we'll do planning commission report.
Sure. Basically in the month of June, what we were looking at was basically bringing aside an ordinance up to the town office, I mean, to the town commission, so basically moving on to the third steps. So basically went from the planning to us as a board, that's basically what we were looking at last month. And we have a meeting scheduled again later this summer, twenty-ninth, yeah, okay, yep. That's actually a quarterly meeting. You saw the results of it when it came to the board, so.
All righty, moving on, now we're getting down to our agenda items. Agenda item number one, approval of the bid to purchase a new mini dump truck for consideration.
Uh, thank you. The town staff would like to replace the current two-thousand-two mini dump truck, this vehicle was originally budgeted for in the FY twenty nineteen budget under the Capital Projects Fund line item for the vehicles. This mini dump is used mostly for plowing, salting, hauling dirt and stone, for the work that's done in the parks, water line repairs, sewer line repairs, et cetera. This line item, when I wrote this for the agenda, the item, line item had a balance of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars in Fund Two, since we are currently July first, beginning of FY twenty twenty, the line item has two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars in line item, Fund Two vehicles. Again, we put it out to bid, we advertised locally, MML, Frederick News Post, Facebook, we received three bids for a new mini dump, you can see they're listed here, MJR Equipment at seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty, Kraus Ford at sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine, and Criswell of Thurmont at eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. Staff recommends MJR Equipment for the following reasons, this is their specialty, this is who we went with for the large dump truck as well, they specialize with the trucks, the plows and the spreaders, they do everything at their shop, they will come to the town to pick up the equipment and make any repairs and bring any parts that are necessary. Frederick County also buys all their trucks, plows and spreaders from them, we can work with Frederick County for any necessary parts if needed. Their bid is very in-depth and broken down into the appropriate sections that we ask for and then they have a good quality product and features with the equipment that they provide and staff has been very satisfied with all equipment and vehicles that we have received from them.
Any questions about the bids presented or before we make a motion?
Sure. I'm looking at the disparity in the bids and it's rather significant between MJR, not MRJ, MJR?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, between MJR and Criswell and what's the cause, is one equipped with, like, already equipped with a plow and a spreader and one's not, or?
Um, to be honest with you, let me see here, the bid that we got from Criswell consisted of seven lines, there was no detail to it. The sale price for the truck, then you have the body and the uplift, you have the total of eighty-seven thousand, nine twenty-two plus the three-hundred-dollar processing fee, that's all they said.
Okay.
So there really was no way to even compare their bid to anybody else's.
Okay. The MJR equipment, the vehicle, it's a new vehicle, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it does come with the plow and the spreading equipment, is that correct?
It comes with everything.
So, yes, it does come with it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. And the Kraus Ford also is the same, like, we're comparing apples to apples, it comes with all the equipment and such?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just sort of have a comment or maybe you can explain, it seems like this year we bought a little sort of Rover ATV vehicle, we bought a new town vehicle, we bought a big dump truck, now we're buying a little dump truck, is it like all the light bulbs were installed and now they're all going out at the same time?
Well, you look, this is a two-thousand-two, so you're looking at a seventeen-year-old dump, mini dump.
Well, I understand that, but it's a
So what we did, yeah, I'll explain to you, so what previous town manager has done over the years is put about sixty-five thousand dollars into your line item for vehicles in Fund Two every year to build up, to buy the vehicles that need to be purchased. We went a long period of time without buying anything. The dump truck that we brought to you earlier this year, that was unexpected, you know, we can't use it, it does not pass DOT, unfortunately it's not anything we can use, it had to be replaced. The town car had, should've been replaced probably
Long time ago.
Three, four years ago. So yes, it does seem like a lot that I'm bringing forth here, it just, it's unfortunate that they all had to be replaced at the same time.
But you do expect that in the future they're all gonna go bad at the same time again and that's gonna be another huge expenditure.
Well, unfortunately, you just never know, unfortunately with some vehicles, like that dump, we never expected the chassis to be broken, we expected to have that for a couple more years, as long as the cars, we do have a preventive maintenance program that is in place, Mr. Click and Mr. Thistle, they take their vehicles for routine maintenance, it's something that we've been working on so we can extend the life of the vehicles. You know, the town car we had for, Amy?
It's a two-thousand-two model, I think.
Okay, so we had it for seven, you know, seventeen years.
No, I'm not begrudging you, you needed a new car, you needed a new.
So all these vehicles are old, I don't know if they were all bought about
I'm just concerned it's all at the same time, so that means like all the light bulbs at the same time or all the fire
Right.
Smoke detectors at the same time.
And I can understand how it appears, but I don't know if all these vehicles, because it was way before my time, if they were all bought at the same time, that I can't really answer, we're hoping that
But we're budgeting for that future thing too, we're gonna continue to put
Yes, so what will happen, as of July first, like I said, we have two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven, after the mini dump is purchased, after this is approved and after the large dump truck, we'll have sixty-five thousand dollars, the town car, new town car's already been paid for, we'll have sixty-five thousand left in Fund Two. The sale from the large dump, we get the bids are due next week, so we'll open those. Any money proceeds we receive from that vehicle will go back into Fund Two and we'll continue to build that line item back up. I don't anticipate any vehicles needing to be purchased from Fund Two next year, I'll have to look at the schedule, we try to maintain a schedule of vehicles.
It's just better to stagger in the future if we can affect that at all.
Well, if we can, we would have been if we didn't have to buy that large dump.
We set up two funds like this about six years ago with
I'm glad we did.
One for the road, so when emergency comes up, you just don't pull it out of general mode. So we're doing that every year, about forty-five thousand, I think, or something, is that correct?
Sixty-five thousand.
Probably for the road, for the road.
Oh, for the roads, it's forty-five thousand.
Something like that.
You're right, it's forty-five thousand. And typically, you know, this truck is budgeted for FY twenty twenty, we might have waited longer, but we're coming in a winter, there is the processing time, we wanna get it in and get it ready to go before winter hits. I won't bring any more vehicles to you.
Thank you. I thought it was deja vu, but mini.
Any other question?
I have a question. And I apologize, I didn't look this up ahead of time, just a simple question though, I know where Criswell and Kraus Ford are located, Frederick County buying all their trucks, plows and spreaders from MJR, where is MJR based, is that a Frederick County business?
I am trying to find my Harrisburg? Harrisburg. Harrisburg.
PA?
Yes.
Okay. That's all, thank you, sorry.
Any other questions, Glenn?
I'm good.
This won't be the first time, if we do accept the staff's recommendation If, if we do accept a staff's recommendation for MJR equipment, this won't be the first time that we had taken the second low bidder instead of the lowest bidder for, for a piece, or for something. Since everybody wasn't, this won't be the first time we have done it. But the, we don't work with the equipment, the staff does. So if they're comfortable with that equipment, I, I don't have a problem using the MJR equipment bid. For that, since we have the money in the, in the line item for that. That's all I have. Any other questions? I need a motion for this, for a consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid to purchase a new mini truck for consideration. And we're going with the MJR bid, is it the one we're going with? Okay. MJR bid for $73,950.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Blanchard for MJR equipment for $73,950.
Second.
Second. Motion has been made by, I mean, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there any further discussion before we go on to the vote?
Mr. Sweetie, I just want to add, I appreciate, I appreciate your clarification, and you make, you make an excellent point. It is the staff who uses the vehicle, and we do, it's important we trust their judgment. That was very persuasive to me.
Yes, thanks. I, I, I agree. I'm a little apprehensive in, nothing against our state to the...
I don't like taking a second notice either.
Or, or our state to the north, you know, like to keep it local, or, or in county. But the fact that Frederick County does buy all their equipment from there, and, and, and they service it, and town staff brings a high recommendation, then that, that is useful information. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you.
Item two two has been taken off the agenda, postponed. The third line item is approval of the bid for the cross connection control preferred contractor for consideration.
Should be prepared for.
I am prepared.
She's mixing papers around.
I have to look at my papers. All right. One thing that I will mention, the agenda item is, is titled approval of the bid for the cross connection control preferred contractor for consideration. As you see, as we go through here, after speaking with John Clapp, we have corrected the contract. The contract will now read approval of the bid for the cross connection control approved contractor for consideration, not preferred. It's just gonna be the approved one that the board, if the board does in fact approve one tonight. So when we announce it in any of the documentation, it's gonna be the approved contractor.
Okay.
So the, the cross connection control ordinance was approved by the board earlier this year. And Zach has fielded numerous questions from residents and commercial entities regarding the backflow preventer program, the cost, any plumbers. Fortunately, or unfortunately, people were getting different responses from different plumbers, different companies. And to, since this was something that the town brought forth, we wanted to do what we could to make the process easier, especially for our residents when seeking to have these backflow preventers installed. One thing to remember is that after the, you have five years from the date of the adoption of the program to complete the process, to have your backflow preventer installed. That includes residents and commercial. So what we did, we thought we would reach out to local plumbers and get their prices, and see if we could get them locked in in a price that's good for the next five years. So your residents had a choice, or an idea of how much it was gonna cost before they began the process. So before I get, get started, if this is adopted, we want to make it clear that no property owner is required to use any of these plumbers that are approved by the board. The town's approval is not a guarantee or warranty regarding the quality of work that may eventually be done, and that the town is not liable for any errors or omissions that may occur in the course of any work the plumber may do. And as we go through this, something to remember, these prices are for ideal situations. If they have to come in and install a backflow preventer and everything goes smooth, this is their price. If they get in there and they, you have a cracked line, you have a cracked valve, or there's additional repairs that have to be done, then that's an additional cost to the, the resident or homeowner, or the commercial property. So what we did is, we, we came up with an RFP, it was reviewed and approved by Mr. Clapp. The RFP was published by the town on May 14th. The bids were due on June 3rd, and we opened them, staff opened them on June 5th. We advertised the RFP on the town's website, Facebook, Channel 99, Frederick News Post, the MML Classifieds, and we also emailed and mailed them to 15 known certified plumbers. We met on June 5th, 2019, at 11:30 to do the bid opening. You'll see in your packet a breakdown of the two bids we received. As you notice, on the bottom of page 18, there's an asterisk. Another bid was received by email, but it was not permitted per the RFP. The RFP stated clearly, you must submit a sealed written bid. We can't accept these bids via email. We consulted with John Clapp, who said, if the contractor resumits in a sealed bid before the deadline, we can still accept it. The company was notified, we never received a sealed bid. So we have two bids to go off of, out of emailing them to 15 and all the, the advertising. So what we did was, we broke it out to a one-year term, a three-year term, and a five-year term. And then, it was also broken out to the size of your water, your water line. So what size backflow preventer they would have to use. So the, the top section, the low-hazard, non-testable backflow preventer bids, that's your residential, low-hazard residential. Kelco Plumbing and Backhoe Services out of Sbilisville. Their one-year term was $162. That's for the whole purchase of the preventer and the installation. At the three-year market, will go up to $172. At the five-year market, goes up to $180. Second bid came from Tri-County Plumbing and Heating, and they are out of Rocky Ridge. Their bid, their price stays consistent from one to three to five years at $275. The second section is your high-hazard, testable backflow preventer bids. That is your commercial. So that's where you're gonna see the different pricing based off the size of your line. So your low-hazard, your residential is gonna stay the same. It's where you see the price changes, it comes to commercial. I'm just gonna use, for example, the three-quarters inch line. Kelco was $540 for one term, Tri-County was $525. Kelco for year three was $595. Tri-County was $525. And then, when you hit year five, Kelco was $672. Tri-County stayed $525. So Tri-County stays $525 across the board.
For clarification, when we talk about the five-year term versus the three-year term and such, that is the term of the warranty, or?
No, that's the, that's their guaranteed price. So for one, year one and two, they're guaranteeing their price to be, for this one, let's say, is $525. For year three and four, they're guaranteeing their price, that's probably bad examples. Move to Kelco. Year one and two, Kelco is $540. Year three and four, Kelco is $595. And then, if you hit year five, it's $672. Because we asked for five-year pricing. So the prices are gonna slightly increase over the years, just because the costs and labor will change.
So they're trying to encourage the activity sooner rather than later?
Right. Because they can guarantee their pricing now, as opposed to five years from now.
Gotcha.
Also, material costs and labor costs may go up also.
So with the high hazard, we require retest every two years. Your high hazard being, again, your commercial. Tri-County will do the retest every two years at 1.3, and five years for 120. And then, Kelco at year one is $175, year three is at 200, and five years at 225. So after reviewing all the bids and going through all the different sizes of water supply... Where's my email at? Hold on. Town staff recommends, based on the comparable bid packets, staff recommends going with Kelco Plumbing and Backhoe Services LLC as the town's approved residential low-hazard, non-testable backflow preventer contractor. So for residential, that is who staff would recommend, the board approves. For commercial, or your high hazards, we recommend going with Tri-County Plumbing and Heating. We also recommend Tri-County for the high-hazard retest, both for a five-year term.
But they don't have to take them?
You do not have to take them. This was just staff's attempt at helping to give everybody an idea of what the process should cost. You obviously can shop around, that's what we encouraged before this program was even passed, to make sure that you get several bids. But these are the locked-in prices if you go with this approved plumber.
Did, when Zach fielded the questions, is, does he need to be, I mean, he's not here, so we can't ask him about what the residents or the business, is that what he did? He got, did he get calls from the town residents and businesses about the thing?
Yes. There was a, a large gap in pricing. So we were trying to narrow that gap.
I don't know if we need a public, should we have like a, an open session or something on this? A special meeting for this, this, for getting public comment and public feedback?
John Clapp did not say that we needed one, because it's not binding, you don't have to take them. This is just something that the town is trying to do to kind of help the residents and the commercial businesses get a locked-in fair price for the five years.
Any questions for the board? Commissioner Buckman?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is so distracting, having your microphone on crazy. The town has, board has historically really been against endorsing, and this kind of looks like endorsing, even though it's a suggestion. We're advertising for one particular plumber over another one, and I know we're trying to be helpful, but I'm thinking what would be helpful is if we were to just get information from plumbers and have it on our town website, saying this is how much this person charges, this is how much this person charges, and this person charges, instead of, we've always been against endorsing one company, and even though we're saying we're not endorsing it, we are endorsing it.
Well, I can't lap the prices in if we don't approve it, so they can charge whatever they want then. I have checked with John Clapp. I have his approval to go this route, saying it's an approved plumber. Like I said, it was just an effort to...
You did so your own...
I know, it's a goodwill effort. I get that.
So I think it's up to the board to make the decision. I think that if you heard some of the phone calls that staff has heard, you would understand the frustration of your residents.
No, no, I get it, because I would be also, you know, frustrated. But I'd also be calling multiple contractors, and nine out of 10 of them never call me back either. It's very frustrating, because, you know, I guess that work ethic isn't so there to respond to phone calls.
We also have residents that either are unwilling, not capable, they, they will go in the phone book and they call the first one, and unfortunately, maybe they'll get the first one that charges them $500 when the neighbor right next to you calls and does their homework, and gets one for $175. We're trying, and, and you're right, it's a good faith effort, and it is up to the board. Staff doesn't have any, you know, investment in this. We just think it is a good course of action, and after checking with John Clapp, it, it's not, he doesn't see a problem with it.
Commissioner Ritz?
Well, I did have a question, but to, to comment on what Commissioner Buckman said, I, I understand her concern. One thing I could think of was that warranty, sewer line, water line warranty program was a company based out of southwestern Pennsylvania. These are two good local companies, though, so I, I feel, I feel good about that. But I, I missed this, I, I'm sorry. The, the pricing that...
Ones for commercial, ones for...
Yes, that, that part I understand, but remind me, the price, does that include the backflow preventer itself?
Yes, that includes the parts plus installation, as long as everything goes smoothly.
Okay. That's good to know. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, sir, thank you. Just for clarification with staff, and kind of speaking to what you were asking about, like, the endorsement piece. I'd actually talked to the town attorney after the water line warranty folks discussions. And that's what I was trying to reach you about, was saying that, he said that it was permissible for the town to do that, to actually advocate for it. And that was the ethics question that personally I had had, because I was very uncomfortable with endorsing a single provider. In this circumstance, if I recall correctly, we had tasked town staff to find a company that could come forward, and they would offer a better price based on the economy or scale that might be there for serving the broader community. Now, that was our advocacy piece. But the other piece that, that staff has emphasized again and again is, no one is obligated to use this group, correct?
Correct.
And the other piece is, the town kind of, well, we do, we wash our hands from the warranty, which is provided by the, the contractor. So on the one side, we've locked in a price that gives people an opportunity. And there's, there's a proactive nature to it. And, and I totally get your discomfort with the piece of it. But the other side of it is, as an advocacy piece, we know that members of the community might not have the means to do this easily. So therefore, if we get cut out some of the shenanigans, we might find, well, having faith in town staff, we should find that these are the best prices the market has made available to us in the time that we've had to research it. So, and, and again, I don't know if that's gonna persuade you or not, you know, I just, that's kind of where I'm coming from in my decision-making.
I think a big part of what you just said about the warranty, that's, that warranty program, this hand, the town had its hands all over it. The providing of the list, the managing, the, and we were actively involved with it. In this, we're basically saying, here's the information, here's the plumber, these are the prices. If you'd like to use them, you call them, you say you're with the town of Emmitsburg, and that's it. We don't have, we don't have anything else to do with it. We're not managing any part of it.
Nor do we receive any funds from this, correct?
Negative, right.
Okay.
Negative.
Terrific, okay. And, and that was another piece of the, the line warranty thing that was concerning to me.
Right, that was a little fishy, right.
If we're, if we're getting a kickback, or however we want to phrase it, you know, dividend, revenue sharing, or whatever you want to call it. That was a concern. The other part was, and again, this speaks to Mr. Ritz and I are kind of, we're ax to grind, we like to spend locally as best we can. But these are companies that are thriving, they're doing well, and they're members of the broader community, and therefore, we have that interaction. Whereas, the, the folks who came in from, yeah, I don't mean to be xenophobic, but we're sort of like, not local, not gonna trust them easily. So, hate to say it that way. You know, my gut check on that was very, the alarms were high. And I have a big gun, I might add, so the alarms were very high. So this, this, I'm much more comfortable with.
So anyhow, I'm glad I brought it out, because I think it probably was a little eke on people's minds. So if we didn't talk about it, that would have been wrong.
I understand. I do.
Now, is that for, is this for outside insulation or inside installation?
Depends where the connection is. I believe it would be outside. Right? Depends where...
Your burner probably would be inside.
Inside.
My burner would be inside.
Let's try.
Trying to trick me up.
That's what I was thinking.
It was in your house for the...
Yes.
Most of your, I mean, that's on meters outside. And the wall, it's gonna go right to the work, it's a little, so if they back down, 90% of the property inside where you're near that.
So they just kind of come in your house and cut it out?
Yep. Mine's in my house. Mine's in my house.
Mine's in my house too.
Yes, but now, okay, so for the low-hazard, I'm sorry, I'm going off here. News reporters, probably, I told you I wasn't going to go off on any tangents, but the low-hazard residents that have the preventer in place, they still need to get it checked, though, right?
Residents that have, currently have a backflow preventer?
Yes.
According to Zach on his list, there aren't any. Now, we have had some installed since this program started, and so they have to get theirs tested every five years, but their five years won't start till the program, until
No, no, low-hazard.
Right, residents.
Okay, so since the ordinance passed, I thought we just need to verify that we have it in place, and then that's it. It's not, it's, it's the
No reinspection?
Right, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to be inspected until, like, the, in the ordinance, it says it has to be re-inspected every five years. But we're not making anybody that does it do, the five years doesn't start until the expiration of that date. So we, we approved it in, this is what, July, June, May, maybe?
Yes.
So five years from May 2019, that's that, May 2024, that's when re-inspections will have to begin.
Who does the inspections?
Staff.
Every house?
Yes.
That's the part I couldn't remember.
No, negative, no. What am I thinking? All are trying to confuse me up there. No, that is where you see the re-inspections. Everybody's confusing me tonight.
No, wait, let's, let's, let's backtrack. So
You okay, Jimmy?
Residents that currently have
We don't have any, okay.
I have a backflow preventer
You do?
in my house.
Are you on the list? You've been checked with Zach.
How do you get on the list?
Call Zach.
Can I just take a picture?
That's not Zach.
Talk to the manager, sir.
Okay.
Get ahold of Zach. Just send him an email, because
I Googled what a backflow preventer was.
Okay.
I know, I was opposed to measure.
Oh, I believe you.
I mean, I know I voted against it, but I did go look at, and I saw it, and it's like, well, that's exactly what I have. It's not very big.
So you would have to have it tested after the, May of 2024. But you will want to get ahold of Zach and confirm that you have one.
Okay. Will do.
The town planner, and that's for any resident that already has one, please get ahold of the town planner and let them know. So he will put you on the list, then we'll know when you're due for reinspection.
I'm on the list. I've been on a couple lists.
He's on my list.
So I'm, I'm finished now. I promise.
Any other questions? Any other questions about the backflow preventers?
No, sir.
Where's Zach when I need him?
All right.
So do, are we considering this tonight, or are we going to wait and see, or are we locking in the the, um, terms of the year?
What do you need us to do?
I would, if the, if the board would like to approve Kelco Plumbing and Backhoe Services as the town's approved residential low-hazard backflow preventer contractor.
I'll make a motion
On page 17.
To approve Kelco Plumbing and Backhoe Services as the town's backflow present, uh, preventer preferred contractor.
Approved.
Approved?
Approved residential low-hazard.
Approved residential low-hazard contractor.
I'd like to take them in two separate motions, since they're two separate companies. So we'll do low-hazard and then high-hazard?
A motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor of the measure, please say aye.
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 And then I'd like to
Motion carries, five to zero.
To make a motion that Tri-County Plumbing and Heating as the town's approved commercial industrial high-hazard testable backflow preventer contractor for their five-year term.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we need a motion for the third part, the high-hazard retest?
That was included with the
Okay.
motion that Commissioner Buckman made on the high-hazard.
Correct.
All righty. All righty. Page nine, number four, playground specialists contract to install the all-exclusive playground in the community park?
Inclusive.
All-inclusive, okay.
Can I get the
What consideration? How's that go?
Oh, no. That poor thing hits, that's going to be a voting thing soon.
You have, beginning on page 19, playground specialist contract to install the all-inclusive playground in Community Park for consideration. The mayor had expressed interest after discussions with other mayors in town and seeing some of the other all-inclusive playgrounds that have been built. The mayor felt there was a need, and staff concurd a need for an all-inclusive playground in the town of Emmitsburg. The thought was to combine it with the current playground in Community Park, so all kids can play together and have a place to go. Our parks are so well maintained, and they're so well attended, because we do put the time and the effort and the money into our parks. I think this is a great, a great project, and I hope that you guys will see the thought and consideration that's been put into this playground. So, on page 19, I'll just highlight this before we get into showing you the actual playground. If the board so approves it, approves the contract tonight, we'll go ahead and turn around and order the equipment. There's a 12-week turnaround on all the equipment for the playground. So we're hoping to have final installation in October of 2019 with a ribbon cutting. We've had several meetings with Playground Specialists and the Civitan Club, who is very active with the inclusive playground in Thurmont, and they're very active with children of all needs.
Little libraries.
Little libraries, yeah. They're very, they're very active in the communities, and they've shared a lot of input and have reviewed all the recommendations from staff and from Playground Specialists. Playground Specialists did the one in Thurmont. I think they are actively doing one in Mount Airy. They came with some really good recommendations. They were very passionate about doing an outstanding project for the town of Emmitsburg. They have ties here. So they put a lot of heart, their heart and soul into this one. So, last year, last year, we reached out to Department Housing and Community Development to see if grant funds would be available for an all-inclusive playground. We were approved for $75,000 for, through Community Legacy with no match required. Maryland Program Open Space approved us for $120,000. The town match, which is required for POS, is $72,095, which we currently have in our Fund II balance. The Civitan Club is pledging, as long as it's approved, which they're confident that will be approved, for $25,000. These, giving us a total fund of $292,095. As we go through the contract, you'll see the total project cost is $302,350. Funds still needed would be $10,255. Staff would come forth with budget transfer in Fund II. As we are closing out fiscal year 19, there are remaining funds in the general fund that could be designated to cover the remaining cost, or we can transfer from line items in Fund II. So we do have the funding for it. Like I said, as of July 1st, the Capital Projects Playground Fund has $72,095 in it with the approved budget transfers. On page 20 is the contract from Playground Specialists. Before I get into it, we signed a contract, the mayor signed a contract with HGAC Buy. Basically, it is a cooperative purchasing agreement out of Texas that government entities, municipalities are using to piggyback to get discounted prices for all-inclusive playgrounds. So if we look at the contract, which I'll highlight when we get back to it, the discount, they gave us 10% off all the Play World equipment, which totals up an $8,000 discount. And then they also give us a 6% discount off list prices, so they give us another $4,390 by piggybacking the contract. Per our code, section 3 dot 12 oh 40, letter D, the town may join with other units of government in cooperative purchasing plans when the best interest of the town would be served. So this would be a cooperative purchasing through them. Other entities have used them. So if we go to, look at the pictures first. This is an idea of what it's going to look like. It is going to attach to the current Community Park playground. We will be removing the rock wall and the current swings that are in there, because those swings take up a lot of area, and they are in need of repair, need to be replaced. Anyway, we will move them and repair them and put them in another park, so they can still be used.
Is that both the swings and the climbing wall?
Yes.
Great.
We'll figure out which park they're best suited to be in, and we'll move them there with some discussion with, with staff. So this is the overall, and then we'll go through some pictures. Again, that's another overall. Over here, let's see, how's my pointer work? Right there. That is a percussion area. That is some drums, a, what do you call it, xylophone? And I forget what that piece is there, but, and again, you see they're under the tents, shaded. This entire area will be a rubber mat surface. I know they had problems with their rubber matting in Thurmont, so this is new and improved, a better surface. This here is the glider, and I'll go through the contract, which gives you the formal name of it. This, children of all abilities can sit in this glider. It is handicap accessible. These are little balance beams. Back here, they're called cocoons for children or anybody with disabilities, especially if they go into sensory overload, autistic children. This is our, this is what we already have there, the slides and the tunnel. This, I hope I have a zoomed-in picture. This thing is amazing. I wanted to play on it. But it's got ro, like, these heavy-duty ropes that you can climb on. You can push a wheelchair underneath it, so kids can climb on it. This is, this is a, like, spin. It's wheelchair height, so they could slide on it. What else? There's something else back here that I can't get to. These are swings. These are the tire swings. You can fit numerous children on it. Okay, so that's the section. There's your, there's your percussion, your musical area. There's your glider. I gotta look up what exactly that does. And you see, you've got little stepping stones in there. There's your swings in the background. These here provide excellent shade. This is one of the playground sets. We have wheelchair accessibility here. That's the one that I, I said, I can't remember exactly what it was, with slides and tunnels. There's your swings. These would be our new swings. They're made of heavy-duty, I believe it's nylon. It's guaranteed up to a certain amount of weight. There's your cocoons under the shade. A balance beam. I call it a balance beam, but it's a balancing area with brakes in it. Here is the spin around. I think it's called an orbit with the heavy-duty nylon in it as well. This is a zoomed-in picture of all the, like, the, it's a new jungle gym, type of jungle gym there is. That's a close-up of it.
Is that you up at the top of the
Yeah, I wish. It's got its own little rock wall, since we have removed the other rock wall. Little area for them to slide down if they'd like. The idea is a playground where all children can interact and not feel left out.
I do have one question. We're going to put benches around?
Well, we've had discussions with that, and the Civitan may, may provide a bench. In discussions with Playground Specialists, I, and I agree with their assertion, to not put too many benches, because it encourages parents and guardians and babysitters to sit and not interact and not, not close. And if they're sitting there and something happens, you know, the reaction time from when you have to get up and go, it encourages them to be a part of that playground as well.